Some opening comments that I want to make and then we'll open it up to anybody who wants to have any comments. I want to start off with kind of a quick overview of HP581. There's three primaries. The floating exemption, the floss tax, and the opt-out. With floating exemption, what HP581 proposes to do is to set a base rate for everybody's appraisals, which will be used to establish an exemption. That base rate will be set as to whatever your appraisal was for 2024. The way that will work going forward is if in 2025, let's say that, use nice round numbers, $100,000 is your 24 appraisal. In '25, let's say $150,000 is your appraisal. We'll take some nice, really cartagellian numbers here. With the floating exemption, you'll have an exemption of, I guess, the difference between what your base is and what the new rate would be, the new appraisal rate. So that would give you an exemption of $50,000. Now, if I'm playing this wrong, jump in.
CPI.
Well, I haven't mentioned CPI yet, right? We're getting there. But that would give you an exemption of $50,000. What HP581 does is it allows that exemption to rise in amount equal to a CPI figure, conservative crisis index, that will be provided to us by the state every year. Just for nice round numbers, let's say that's 10%, because I can calculate 2.5% by hand. So what happens is, your rate is $100,000, your new appraisal is $150,000. There's a 10% CPI number. That means that that base rate can go up 10% before your appraisal gets adjusted. So now, instead of $100,000 and you've got a $50,000 appraisal, that's become $110,000 and you have a $40,000, not appraisal but exemption. So it can be a valuable thing. I mean, it is a protection against tremendously spiraling cost. Now, having said that, that's how I describe the floating exemption in 581. Gilmer County has a floating exemption already. I had said at the last meeting since 2008, and I was wrong, it's been since 2006. So for those folks who have owned their homes since 2006, you already have a base exemption rate or base rate of whatever the value was of your home in 2006. What that means is, let's say your exemption in $100,000 in 2006 was $50,000. I thought I'd shut the sound down. Now, at least on how you're basing it. So let's say in 2006 it was $50,000, in 2025 it's at $150,000. All of a sudden, your exemption now is $100,000. It's far more advantageous than if you're using a 2024 base of $100,000 with a 10% CPI and now your exemption is $40,000. The county floating exemption has no CPI associated with it. The CPI will provide an automatic increase every year. It'll be different every year depending on what the factor is that's thrown out to us, whereas your base can rise. The higher your base gets, the less your floating exemption is going to be. So if you started out in 2006, or if you started out with 2010, 2015, you're going to probably have a better base than if you go with whatever your appraisal was last year in 2024. Now, it has been pointed out to me that the way 581 reads it, we'll calculate both and you'll get to take advantage of whatever's the best. That's a good deal. Two things on there. The first is contrary to what has been stated here, there is a lot of administrative work associated with it. And software that's currently in place, somewhat helpful, will not just automatically spit out the numbers. That's one thing. The other thing is the CPI that we talked about. The county floating exemption does not have an automatic increase based on CPI. 581 does. So over time, you're going to continue to go up and up and up. So that is my take on floating exemptions. Right now, I want to kind of jump in and say, there is nothing in HP581, whether we have to stay in, whether we opt out, that is going to affect the over-65 school exemption. Not a part of this. Does not go away. There's rumors out there that seem to persist that if we opt out, that over-65s are going to go away. Has nothing to toe us ever. Not going to affect anything. One of the things, and I've listened to the Brian Pritchard program with our state senator where he's describing this, and a couple of others pick with him as well. There seems to be, or there seemed to be, an acceptance of the fact that all we're interested in is getting your money. We should be cutting expenses rather than taking your money. Okay, I think myself as a conservative, I don't disagree with cutting expenses rather than taking money. We had to cut nearly $5 million out of budget this year. We did that. Tough job, but there's a, just an acceptance out there that we're not good stewards of the taxpayer's money. It's just a given. Now, I know he threw that out there, and all the counties, and I hope he didn't specifically say Gilmer. But the social media posts, of course, are saying everything from, you know, "We are not stewards of your money," to "All we care about is getting more and more money." That's not even counting the ones you talk about, how much I'm getting all of y'all. You know, it gets a little personal to me when I hear somebody up there particularly in that position talking about how this is something that's going to protect y'all from us. I personally don't feel that protecting from us is necessary. Let me put that, I'm going to say that for after later. So let's talk about our taxes here. I've been quoted as saying Gilmer County has the third lowest taxes of 159 counties in the state. There is a document in here, and I'm not sure where it came from, I'm just going around getting up all the 581 stuff, that does specify that Gilmer County is the third lowest in the state, gives the four lowest and the four highest. But the document that I've used for that, and I've provided a copy of it at the time here, is several years old, and I'm thinking 2019, 2020, something like that. But it was the most recent thing I could find, and in fact, it was the only thing at the time that I could find that listed all the counties. So I started looking again yesterday, and oh, no, we can tell you what just we found in another list. At this time, it is in the Department of Revenue's website. If you go to the Department of Revenue, Georgia Department of Revenue, you can navigate to a page in there that lists all the taxes of all the 159 counties. Now, this doesn't say Gilmer County x mils. What it says is county's name, unincorporated, this number of mils, scoot, this number of mils. Some counties have recreation, this number of mils. It breaks out the total military into its component parts. That's important because what I'm about to tell you is, I only look at unincorporated military in this. We don't have anything to do with the school rate. I'm not talking about your school tax. I'm talking about what we have to control right here. So I went down all 159 counties, looking in there, unincorporated rate. First of all, I calculated ours. Ours, by the way, is 6.25. 6.25 is represented, and this was for '24, it's a little lower than that. I'm sorry, '23, it's a little lower than that for '24, but this was, we're looking at 23 figures here. We were at 5.5 military rate for maintenance operation, 0.75 for, for a total of 6.25. So what I'm doing is I'm going down, looking unincorporated for anything less than 6.25. And there are some. When I would find something less than 6.25, the next thing I do is I want to make sure that there's no additions to that. If somebody's got 6.0 and they're lower than us, but they've got two mils for recreation tax on top of that, one and a half for fire, that counts. You know, that's all things that are under control of the board commissions. So in that situation, I do not deem them to be lower than us because I'm adding up recreation and so forth. So if it's lower than us and there were no additions, I judge it, and I'm going to know that. So here's what we've got now. On that basis, Gilmer County of the 159 counties is the ninth lowest, after we take out everything except just county stuff. The lowest, and nobody can touch Fannie County in the state of Georgia, is 2.757 mils. Second lowest, Union County at 4.286. Towns County at 4.339. Hart County at 4.418. Hocany County at 4.824. Oberford at 5.516. Dawson at 5.634. Walker at 5.735, and then Gilmer at 6.25. Now, I didn't print a copy of this to give out to everybody because it's 27 pages long. But I am telling you, go to the Department of Revenue's website, you can go to it, you can print it out, fact-check, you know. I checked it, and double-checked it, and triple-checked it, and on the double-check and the triple-check, I found things I missed. I think now I've got it pretty good, but fact-check me on. So of 159 counties, 6.25 Gilmer County is the ninth lowest in terms of government, county government property tax in the state of Georgia. To me, that doesn't equate to you have to be protected from us. But, you know, the prevailing opinion is we're all elected officials, we're all corrupt criminals. I understand that, I feel the same way about the folks who used to be in Washington. So, having said that, that brings us to another item that I disagree with Senator on. One of the things that he mentioned, that y'all have to be protected from us from, and by this I mean including all 159 counties, yes, because he didn't particularly say Gilmer, is raising taxes through the back door. Three, four times he mentioned raising taxes through the back door, and he explained that. If we raise the military rate, that's property tax increase. There are steps you have to go through for a property tax increase. You have to place an ad in the paper saying, "We're raising your taxes, and we're going to have three public comment sessions for you to discuss that." And we have to advertise those and say, "Herefore, you're going to be, and you have to hold those." Sandra Gutson, well, the senator's contention is that we try to raise taxes through the back door because what we do is, we rely on the higher appraisals and the higher tax digest to leave the military where it is and yet still get more money. Okay? That has been a problem in the past in some counties. Back in the 70s, we had one of fastest-growing counties in the state, and not state or in the United States. Their tax digest, from year to the next, was tremendously higher and they just left the military where it was and they got some really nice increases. And the citizens of that county got upset, meant to the legislature about that. Now, I'm not going to say what county it was, but that is something that comes at all in the SNC. There's been an ongoing situation with the SNC. They have come to the thing called the taxpayers' bill of rights. I asked the lady that was very critical of this in her last meeting, she was familiar with the taxpayers' bill of rights, and she was not, so I asked her to check it out. I felt like I needed to print it out for this too, back in the 70s. I also wanted to make sure it hadn't been, you know, changed since then. Turns out that it has, there was a 1990 some version, I printed, but the important part, did not change. And I printed out, I think I might have printed out a few copies of that. Yeah. So I printed out some of those, and there's something in there that I specifically want to address to you. By the way, this can also be found in the Department of Revenue's website, which was a pleasant surprise to me because I hadn't really looked last time I was looking for this thing, but then again, that was 1990 some version. Property Taxpayer's Bill of Rights, Senate Bill 177, Act 431, signed April 30th, 1999, became effective January 1st, 2000. Bill has two main thrusts. First is rollback of military when the digest value is increased by reassessments. When the total digest of taxable property is prepared, Georgia law requires that a rollback military must be computed that will produce the same total revenue on the current year's new digest that last year's military would have produced had no reassessments occurred. Now, that's the legal way of saying, "We can't take in more from y'all this year than we took in last year." If the county elects to set their military rate higher than the rollback rate, which means if we just leave it where it is and don't go back to the rollback rate, they will be required to hold three public, I mean hearings, place notices of the increase in the paper. Living authority must hold three public hearings, lack public input. Two of these public hearings may coincide with other required hearings. One of the three has to begin between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. We have to publish notice in the paper one week before each hearing. It's identical to if we just raised the military rate and raised your taxes. The process for us just to leave the military rate where it is and get that backdoor tax increase, the process that we have to go through for that is exactly the same as the process that we would have to go through if we raised the military. No difference. Now, I have a great deal of difficulty in thinking of this as a backdoor increase, but we don't have to do anything different to raise the military than we do if we just leave it the same. Some of y'all may remember, a couple of years ago, we did leave it the same. You remember the ads in the paper, you remember the public comment sessions, anything backdoor about it. So, yeah, I had a little problem with that, and I don't see that as something that y'all have to be protected from us for. Now, floss. One of the incentives, and I just refer to it as the carrot for HP581, is you can create a, I think the alphabet floss is floating, floating all local option sales tax, something like that, the floss. It's kind of like this floss, you can do up to 1% on the sales tax. And what this does is every, all the revenue that's brought in by that 1% can only be used to offset property taxes. So let's say we need $10 million in a year of property taxes to run the whole. If we have a floss, then that 1% brings in $4 million. Now, we don't need to collect $10 million from y'all, we need to collect $6 million from y'all. It's a good thing, no question, not tonight. Now, it has to be put up for a vote, the citizens would have to vote it in, maybe they will, maybe they won't, but it would be to the advantage, in my opinion, to vote it in because it's only going to be used to offset your property taxes. That's the carrot. Here's the stick. If one of the governmental entities opts out, in our case, the government entity or the county, if either one of us opts out, then we cannot do a floss. Can only do it if everybody stays in. So that's the incentive, that floss is the incentive, to have us not opt out. It's a nice incentive. Question I have is if it's that good in 581, why don't they let us do it without 581? I mean, it's a good thing, good thing, we shouldn't have to opt in forever to be able to do a good thing. I would love to present to y'all, here's a floss. Vote it in, take advantage of it, vote it down, don't take advantage of it, it's up to y'all. But if it is such a good idea, and I believe it is personally, why are we only allowed to do it if we stay opted in to 581? Why can't we just do it anyway on our own? But we can. That brings us to opting out. I had a lot to say about home rule in our last meeting. Senator and Mr. Pritchard had a lot to say about what a bunch of hootie that was, that's not, this doesn't affect home rule at all and so forth. I respectfully disagree. One of the things in preparing for this meeting, and just generally preparing, I went through everything I could find on Lake Street for 581. School board has pretty good information on there that they came up with. And I know it's a school board, maybe it applies to us, maybe it doesn't. But this is something, and I want to give them credit for this, I don't want to steal their stuff. Why is local control important? Statewide solutions don't always work in every community, and Gilmer is a great example. The only people we can truly trust to take care of our citizens and students are the people we elect locally to keep the budget in check and send a reasonable military. What that says to me is, you may not, and when I say you, the people of Gilmer County may not agree with how we are running things, they may not agree with the military rates we set, they may not agree with our budgets. At any point, they're only two years away from voting one of us out, put somebody in that they agree with. All right here, on the local, if you don't like what I'm doing, whenever you stand up that you do like what they'll do, kick me out, put them in. Happens every day all over the county, happened to a lot of people in a lot of counties in this last election. It's a lot more difficult to vote out state people. Let's just say that we did decide we wanted to vote our representatives out. Now, before this goes down the rumor mill, I'm very happy with our two representatives. I don't plan to vote against either of them that I can imagine. I am not suggesting this for us, I'm giving them an example here. Let's say you do want to, you don't want to vote out your local folks, you like to keep your local folks as so state folks, we want to get rid of them. Because we're opted in on this thing and they're making all these changes that we don't agree with, but we can't get out, so now our only option is we're able to vote them out. Okay? Maybe in Gilmer County you feel that way. Maybe the six other counties, where our state senator doesn't feel that way. It's a lot more difficult, I mean, it's, if you want to change somebody in the state vote, you cannot do it alone. If you want to change me, y'all, all you need is yourselves. If you want to change our state senator, you've got six other counties that you're going to have to convince. Maybe you can, maybe you can't, I don't know. And again, I'm not suggesting, I'm simply making the point that with local control, you truly are indeed in control. You see that control's in state, you're lucky. Maybe they'll do wonderfully, and if they do, great, maybe they won't, if they don't tell, if you've got it, you're in, you can't get out. So that, if everything else in HP581 was wonderful, and some of it is, that alone, the fact that once you're in, you can never get out, would make me want to opt out. Now, I have made, I made a comment at the last meeting that once we're in, HP581 can be changed, modified, who knows what it'll look like 10 years from now? But when you're in, you're in, whatever changes are made, you got them. The comment was made to me that that can't be done without constitutional amendment. I disagreed. And I got pushed back, "No, constitutional amendment, that's what it took, put 581 in, you can't change it without a constitutional amendment." The senator in his comments to Brian Pritchard the other day did acknowledge, "We can change HP581 in whatever we want to." That was only the implementing portion of the constitutional amendment. Once that constitutional amendment's in place, 581 can be changed, saying anything we wanted to change with a simple act of the legislature. We do not require a constitutional amendment, they change it to. He acknowledged that, and she said I was wrong when I said you can change it without one, but the senator has acknowledged that. So you've probably ready for me to summarize, and in closing, always, that's my favorite part of anything anybody ever says, in closing. Gilmer County has a better floating exemption in place, and we'll buy 581 for you. Even the most arduous supporters of 581 will tell you, it will be 10 to 15 years before, even in the best of cases, people will start seeing a better situation with 581 than it would with what Gilmer County has got in place. And then, it may be $5, $10 a year, something like that, if it happens, and it may also be for 10% population and not 90 or 100. So we have a better in place right now than what 581 gives. 581 doesn't give the CPI limiting how much this can grow. I thought that we weren't allowed to do a local CPI. But in senators' comments, they mentioned a couple of counties who actually do have that in place already, so I assumed if they can do it, we can do it. So I approached Teresa and I said, "If we can put in a local CPI, you know, I want to make sure that if we opt out, the people here get everything they would have gotten if we'd stayed in. So if we can put in a local CPI, let's put in a local CPI." Teresa's response is, "Why would you want to do that?" "Well, I want to give them everything 581 can give them." "Yeah, but that's a negative for 581. That decreases the amount of the floating exemption that you can get." That decreases the amount of the floating exemption that you can get because you're allowed to raise your base. She's right. I hate it, but she's right, and I'm wrong. I'm okay with her being right, as long as I'm not wrong, but she's right. Why would we want to do that, so we don't? I am committed personally to doing everything I can to ensure that if we opt out, y'all don't miss a thing that you could have gotten with 581 that would be beneficial to you. You may miss the CPI, it's costly. I don't think that'll be beneficial to you, I think that's going to be a negative for you. Now, if enough of you think you want it anyway, it can range at that too. But, that's, that's me speaking, that I think we need to opt out. We need to make sure that y'all don't miss out on anything that 581 would have given you by us opting out. We just give it to you locally. That's my spiel. So, with that, I'm going to open this up for anybody that wants to speak. On my request, that when you stand up. My time's up. When you stand to speak, just please hear your name, so that everyone can make no doubt. Yes, sir.
I have more problems, my man. I've just got one quick question. If we, you're saying if we opt in, we will never be able to get out of it, right? If we opt out, can we get in later on if we don't like what the county's doing?
What you'll have to do, if you opt out, what the county's doing? Replace the people who do it. You have that option, you can replace those pretty easily.
Tax former, and my wife was in over here, but it's a little statement. Understanding HB 581 and its impact on homeowners. In November, Georgia voters overwhelmingly approved HB 581, a constitutional amendment aimed at providing tax relief to homeowners across the state. In Gilmer County, we voted 64% in favor of the amendment. I personally voted no because I was terrified of losing the local control. On the ballot, it set out, it was a statewide property tax measure, so I said no. But as I have studied and tried to understand it better, this measure prevents backdoor tax increases. It introduces a new float homestead exemption that caps annual assessment increases to the Consumer Price Index. The legislation addresses concerns from citizens who struggle with escalating property taxes and increasing mortgage payments over the past several years. With this option, appraisals no longer play a part in the math after the first base steer. Since 2020, we have seen skyrocketing appraisal values. Our taxing authorities are quick to say that they're doing the taxpayer good favor by rolling back the millage rate. And y'all have saved us money, and we all side with relief. But when the tax bill comes around, it shows an increase and not the decrease we expected. Over the past five years, the levy taxes have increased $4.3 billion, $1 million in Gilmer County. That is a 70% increase. During the same five years, CPI has only increased 20%. Now, the scare tactic is that the counties are going to lose money with this new HB 581 option. They want to tell you that you will have to choose which service to starve because they won't be able to raise the money under this new option. This is not true. They will retain the revenue that they have currently, and it will increase with the CPI, with the rate of the CPI or inflation. If they have increased budgets, the option to raise the millage rate is always there. Nothing is stopping them from raising the millage rate. If they don't want to raise the millage rate, they can cut the wasteful spending. And we know that every government agency has wasteful spending. As I mentioned earlier, I was terrified of losing local control. Everything that I have read and the questions I have asked points to not losing control. None of our local exemptions will disappear. The taxpayer only benefits from this amendment giving them the second exemption option. The taxpayer is given the best option between all that is available to them. So if the local option is better, the taxpayer will receive it. But if the state option, HB 581, is better, they will receive that. On the tax bill, you will see the difference between the local option and the state option. More transparency in our government. How can you disagree with that? Another talking point we all hear is that it will cause another employee and more equipment software to manage the extra option. The State Majority Leader, Steve Goach, informed me that the local offices already have all the equipment needed to implement this new system. Said no additional cost needed. To me, Diane, if a government chooses to opt out, they are not looking after the homeowner. They don't want the finger to be pointed at them when they have to raise the millage rate when they have these bloated budgets that have increased 70% in five years. Thank you.
Thank you. This is basically the same comments that Diane made at the last meeting. And honestly, all due respect, they're incorrect. You mentioned backdoor, that we're using the back. Well, I've already talked about that. There is no backdoor. We, if we leave the military where it is, even if we reduce it, but we don't reduce it all the way down to where the rollback rate is, we have to go through the same process as if we had increased it. There is no backdoor. It says this introduces a new floating exemption. That's true for a lot of the counties in the state of Georgia. Remember, this is a one-size-fits-all for 159 counties. There are a lot of counties in the state of Georgia, maybe most of them, I don't know, that don't have a floating exemption. This does not introduce anything new for Gilmer County. It may be for some, but not for us. This idea that we would lose money, I've never said in any of my comments that we would be losing money. I have said that there's going to be probably a transfer that if the situation was such that because of 581, homeowners pay less, and the creators of 581 will tell you this, this is not taking away money from a county. This is the way it was explained to me by the legislature. This is not taking away from a county if these people pay less. This is a transfer, the commercial properties will pay more, the rental properties will pay more. If you're anybody but a homeowner with a homeowner exemption, you will pay more because that money is shifted over here. Now, I generally kind of equate this to the school tax. Several years ago, we in Gilmer County exempted all, everybody 65 and over from paying the school tax. Now, that's big because that's like 2/3 of your total tax bill. The school system lost a lot of money, they were poised to lose a lot of money. Their response to that was they had to raise their military rate so that those people who were not over 65 and still had to pay the school tax were paying more than they would have if all the over 65s were also paying. Simple arithmetic. If they need this much money and this many people stop paying into it, all these other people are going to have to pay more for them to reach this amount. It's the same thing with 581, or for some counties. And again, this is a one-size-fits-all. A lot of this is just not hurting it to Gilmer County. He said all the exemptions will disappear. I don't know of any exemptions that are disappearing on this. I guess in that situation, I'd say, what situation? What exemptions are disappearing? There are no exemptions that are disappearing. This is going to aid transparency. This is a hot button on mine. I don't know how we can be more transparent. The state requires us, you know, if, with the military thing, we've already discussed what we have to do to do anything other than take the rollback rate. Y'all have actually seen it. I'm going to say, and there's some people in here that will know this, and I hope will acknowledge it, that you have never asked me for anything, ever, anything that you didn't get quickly, honestly, and without argument. And if you have, then please give me the example, bro, I need to fix it. And I know that sometimes you define transparency as if it's, if we're talking about a change to the landing ordinance, let's say you don't put it on the website, you're not being transparent. If you say that's available here, you can have it. But now we've got to go and get it, that's not transparent. Or if you say, I can email it to you, but we got to email you, that's not transparent. If you don't put it on the website so we can go there and click on it, you're not being transparent. We do have some limitations with the website, and just how much we can load on there. I mean, there's certain limitations that we have. If I'm telling you, if you email me and ask me for whatever changes we're going to make, I'm happy to email it back to you, then I have a problem with the idea that I'm not being transparent because I'm not posting the whole hundreds of pages on the website. I just, I'm going to dispute it. I think we're transparent, I don't see how we could be more transparent other than perhaps that particular example. As far as no additional cost, I'm going to defer to our chief of appraisal for that because we've had this discussion many times. Yes, the software can do some of this, but there will be additional cost and there will be at least one additional person. So, Teresa, would you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, we're currently maintaining a local. And our current deal, and we won't get too far into this, does require that, you know, these numbers are not a set it and forget it. You know, they have to be maintained, they have to be audited. We have to track any substantial changes, additions, deletions, land changes, things of that nature. So it is a labor-intensive process. The computer software, and regardless of the software in place right now, and our software company is making great strides in trying to make this fit the entire state of Georgia. You know, it's still in a labor-intensive process. Somebody still has to do all the checks and balances of these numbers. It's not a matter of just plugging in that figure. You do plug it in at the end, but it does have to be calculated. I'll just also go ahead and just reiterate that this is not a fair market value cap. So I think that that's a big misconception right now with HB 581. It is an assessment cap, it's not a fair market value cap. So if your value goes up 10% and the CPI changes by 5%, yes, you pay on the 5% difference. But currently in Gilmer County, the big difference is, is on the county portion. And that's the only one I'll speak of, is the county and county MNO. The county currently doesn't place an inflationary cap. So if it's a 10%, it's a 10% is what you're getting the benefit of. So, I think it's important to know that, you know, we, what we have locally, for all purposes, should always supersede 581. I think 581 has a lot of good qualities to it. And I think for a lot of counties, this is going to be very, very helpful to the property owner. I just feel like what we currently have in place in Gilmer County on the county and the county bond, because we do get that exemption on both, 581 is strictly for the county MNO, it doesn't address the bond. So you're getting that additional savings right off the bat. I think what we have, like I said, now supersedes it. Tracking it, and you know, some people have made that comment, well, what's the harm? But I mean, it does have to be tracked forever. And you are dealing with two different sets of values in database. So, I mean, it can be labor-intensive. Because again, the software is meant to be a statewide software, not necessarily individual software. And I would just encourage everyone to look at your 2024 tax bills. I mean, take a look at your bills and take a look at the amount that you're currently saving on the county MNO and the county bond.
Let me say too, in terms of the cost, and I'm just going to pick a figure out of there and say $40,000 here. You know, you can make an argument that if this really is helpful and saves taxpayers a few hundred thousand dollars, $40,000 would be a good investment, a good pay. And in many counties, that probably would be the case, it's just not the case here. So, we can say that the cost is minimal. My response would be, why would we even want to pay a minimal cost if it's not going to give us more benefits? I would say too, and we mentioned several times here that there are counties that 581 will help the property owners. We've said it more in terms of maybe those folks should not opt out. I have a little different take on it. I think that if you live in a county where 581 actually is going to give you things you don't already have in the county, maybe you need to push the county to opt out, but fix what they're not doing to make sure that you do have everything already in place that 581 can give you. If I was county commissioner in one of those counties, I wouldn't be saying, okay, 581, we don't have this, and yeah, this will be helpful, so we need to stay in. I'd be saying, I don't like the forever aspect of this thing, and I think we need to opt out, but I understand our deficiencies and we need to fix that for y'all, and we need to do it locally, if I was one of those counties. For our county, we already have it, so. And honestly, I wasn't sure upfront when 581 first came out and that's the obvious issue. You know, my first thought is, and I even made a comment in one of our regular meetings, I just want us to make sure that we give y'all whatever else we need to do to make sure that you don't miss anything by us opting out. And I'm going to fess up, I'm one of those over 65 guys that don't pay the school tax, and I don't necessarily keep up with what I'm paying or not paying or whatever. I'm just happy with the bill I get every year. It was a surprise to me when I got with Teresa and we started going over this. It was a surprise to me to find out that we already had much better than what it offered. You know, I'm just thinking, maybe where it's good, or maybe we need to add a little to it, but it turns out we're way better than what 581 can give you. So, that was a very pleasant surprise to me. That's something that I can't take credit for, and we can't take credit for. All that came about 2006 timeframe, way before any of us ever even thought about running for anything properly. But it's there, and we don't want to mess it up, we just want to maintain it. I agree with the cost-cutting part. I agree that there's probably waste. I will say this, in the last budget sessions when we had to cut, I think we started out with, what, $5.5 million we had to cut out of the MNO budget. That's $3 million, $3.5 million pretty easily. It got tough after that. I don't doubt somewhere in budget, there's still waste. But, we were cutting things that we really thought we needed to cut. Because we couldn't find any more waste to cut, or what we would have cut waste. So, that's my response to that. I understand the feelings, things that I thought initially too. And honestly, things that the state senator has, I think, erroneously indicated on his show to Brian, right here. In terms of backdoor, and actually, I made a copy of this. Even highlighted it for him. It is stated that we cannot backdoor. So anybody, when you hear people talking about going to the backdoor with this, if you read that, understand that they took the backdoor out years ago. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's John Hossler. The way I, when I voted for this, the way I understood it is that my tax bill, overall tax bill, would only go up the CPI every year. And coming to these meetings, that's not what I understand. You guys, all it does is the homestead exemption part, so you guys can still increase the millage rate as much as you want to.
Absolutely.
So, what's the purpose? I mean, I don't see a benefit, we still have to deal with you on tax increases.
I can tell you in my opinion.
That's why I misunderstood.
Yeah, I can tell you in my opinion what the purpose of it is. And it's just my opinion. First of all, let me say that I think the way it was worded on the panel, that was very unfortunate. I think it was something like, would you like to have a cap on appraisal or something like that?
I think, while I had that in my head, my parents lived in Florida, and I think in Florida, they have it so his bill would not go up more than inflation. It has nothing, and they could try to raise the, you know, for everybody else, but if you, once you... you, once you bought it, it could only go up a certain amount.
This absolutely is not the answer.
Well, see, that's what I thought it was.
And even in the, in the conversation on Brian Fritter with our senator, he said in that this is not going to cost the county any money, they can still raise the millage rate. That was in the backdoor part of it, and he said they can still raise the millage rate, they just can't go through the backdoor to it. So this doesn't give that protection. If it did, what I would have to be saying now is, if we want to opt out of it, we're going to have to make that same commitment ourselves to put that in place locally. If we even could, I don't know if we could even do that with the state. But this, that is not anywhere near what this bill.
Yeah, sir, I have a feeling, I'm not alone on how they interpret this.
I understand you're right. And one of, and one of the things, going back to the, what the school board put out to their people, it says, isn't this what the public voted for? I believe that what the public truly voted for was tax relief, not the negative consequences HB 581 creates. If we want issues of local taxation to be decided by representatives elected by and accountable to local people, we must opt out. So, and I agree with that. I think the way that it was listed on the ballot, I think people didn't understand what they were going for. I think they were voting for tax relief, and that's not what this was necessarily offering. There was, okay, back to my opinion. I get a lot of complaints about the taxes here. All y'all want is money, the taxes are horrible, they're quadruple, quintuped since I got here 183 years ago. It's ridiculous. I get those. So do they. And they're all related to the appraisals. Appraisals have gone completely crazy. You know, I see it on my appraisal. I'm going to interject one thing here. I've never had anybody that I would ask, would you sell your property for this appraisal to tell me yes? But that's sad. I understand the problems with the appraisal, but the people thought they were wanting for tax relief. The people in the state legislature can't get the same things. And these are people, these are their voters, just like y'all are our voters. This is ridiculous, you have to do something. Well, I think this is their response to that. Okay, we've done something. We've pushed it back on the counties, but we're the good guys now, and the counties are going to be the bad guys. So, we have listened, we have heard, you know, I think that's what HB 581 is implementing. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Kimber, congratulations. Valuations increase over time in sort of savings, right? So HB 581 allows for the reduction, as you said, it would take several years potentially to see the value of, and the implementation during that same period, let's just say it takes seven years, and during that same period of time, if you didn't adopt 581, you would see the county revenues increasing. Because you can't have one without the other.
But increasing based on what?
Evaluations, the increased number of parcels and homes being built.
Okay, increased number of parcels and homes being built. We are allowed to collect additional tax basically one time a year for new construction. Also, even with 581, that's our policy now, but it doesn't. If you bought your home in 2008, and you did your home sit exemption, so your base rate is valued at 2008 basis. If you sell that home in 2025, whoever bought that home is going to come in with 2025, right? It was after '24, because it's the last previous year. Whoever's, that valuation, that $50,000 in our previous example, is not going to apply to them, it doesn't carry over. Whatever was the '24 appraisal is going to become their base. So if somebody sells their home, then that goes away. And yeah, we'll collect more money on those folks. If you do major renovation, if you add a free car garage or a few rooms or whatever, you're probably going to get reevaluated, and that base is going to change. But that'll still tie to 581 as well. That's not going to be something 581 protects you from. So, the county is, as we grow, and we are growing, and that's all I'm going to say about that. As we grow, we're going to collect more and more money for the new construction. We're probably going to collect a little more money from, even though you've got a 2008 exemption, because the rollback millage rate is going to, they can't get it down to the penny in some estimate, and there'll be a little bit more, you know, sometimes for myself. You know, I paid $12 more one year, or I paid, I think most I ever paid was $300 or one year for the county portion of it. But... So yeah, there's going to be some modest increases. It's going to happen. You can't go buy a grocery store without paying all this. People, you know, I hear about inflation. You're killing us with taxes and inflation, we're at 17% inflation. Look at what, you should see what the county's doing with all that. I used to go buy an F-250 pickup, $38,000. Now it's more like $65,000, $70,000. And I got away two years' skill. We're dealing with things the same way y'all are dealing with things. So, you know, there may be a year that comes around and maybe we feel like we can't take the rollback rate. Maybe we have to leave it where it is. I'm not even going to guarantee that sometime we won't even have to raise the millage rate. We've got a problem here in that the growth that we've got is outpacing the infrastructure that we have. Now, the solution to that is to manage the growth. I think the infrastructure comes first. Infrastructure comes first and growth comes second. We got it this way. But at some point, there's going to be a business in the butt, and we're going to have to very quickly catch up. And I can't sit here and guarantee y'all that there'll be a time when that millage rate won't actually increase instead of just even staying the same. So, the county, we're going, we're going to manage what we can, the best that we can. And then we're going to come to y'all and say, okay, here's what we got to play with. Here's one of the problems we have with that. County folks want a lot of services. But they face, we've got some folks who want $15 million sports complex. They're out of, how dare we be the only county that doesn't? They'll fill, they'll fill a room with 500 people demanding it. And what you'll hear is two things. We're fine with you raising our taxes for this, but just get it done. Okay, well, you 500 people are fine. There's 31,000 others who may not be. The other thing is, you could do this if you just stopped paying so dang many roads. They're right again, we could. But there's a whole bunch of people over here, and what we're hearing from them is, you can pave our roads if you just forget about that stupid sports complex. Because we're trying to do that the same way we did the swimming pool. We're not going to borrow money for it. We're setting money aside in the budget every year, and we're saving up for it. Now, I can pave some roads with the money we're setting aside in the budget for them, no doubt. But these people really want that sports complex, and it's more important to them than roads. These people really want the roads, and it's more important to them than sports complex. Don't even get me started on the swimming pool. We've got people in the animal shelter, at the animal shelter. By the way, I'm one of those who think that we're seriously underfunded in the animal shelter, we need extension, more than we need roads made, more than we need sports complexes, blah, blah, blah. And we could do that if you just forget about the sports complex, quit making the roads, we'd have a fine animal shelter. Pick your topic, you know? Everybody has their thing. And everybody thinks I'm not being unreasonable to walk my thing, even though it costs forever because they could cut all these other things. So it's these other people's thing. It's tough for them to help.
Yeah, previously you mentioned businesses that would be negatively impacted by 581.
Commercial.
Okay, so these are, so you've been obviously approached by commercial business owners?
No, I'm getting that from the legislators.
Explain.
The legislators will tell you that this does not take money away from the county because the homeowners pay less according to them. And in some counties, that's true. It's not going to take any money away from the county. It's going to shift that burden from the homeowners to the commercial property owners and rental property owners. So, this is not the county getting less money. This is a matter of, just like the example I gave, the school board exemption, this is a matter of y'all pay less, so these pay more. From our perspective, we still get the same amount. It's a wash for us, but, and it's an advantage for y'all in other counties. But it's a disadvantage for the commercial folks in those counties because whatever 581 might save somebody, fortunately for us, it's not going to save anybody. Whatever 581 may save somebody in some counties is going to have to be made up from the commercial sector, the rental sector, anybody whose property tax does not have a home sit exemption attached to it. They'll ask your legislators, go to each.
Well, currently, correct me if I'm wrong, commercial and second homes, which includes short-term rentals and whatnot, don't enjoy the homestead exemption anyway.
They do not.
Right. So, I don't, they just stay in the same position. I don't see how, they just wouldn't be able to opt into the savings.
Okay.
They would still have the same experience.
They would, but here's why they pay more money. And it goes back to the same thing with the school board. If the school board needs $10 million to operate, and we exempt everybody over 65 from paying, and those people pay $5 million probably in this county toward that $10 million. School board now doesn't get $10 million anymore that they need. They get $5 million. They got to get that $10 million from somewhere else. Where that somewhere else is, is everybody that is not over 65. So if you used to pay $2,500 for school tax, now you may pay $3,300 for school tax because it's just simple arithmetic. The school board's got to have this. What they don't get here, they're going to have to get here over and above what they used to get to make this up. Same way with, with the home sit exemptions. If the home sit exemptions are such that homeowners with an exemption pay less, let's say $2 million less overall, the people who don't have a home sit exemption will have to have theirs raised to cover that $2 million so that the county still gets what they get. It's the distribution of it that changes. And if you're one of the homeowners that has the exemption and a county can work that to save you money, great for you. Not so great for the folks who have to make that up. The good part about that is that none of that applies to Gilmore County. Because you get more now than what 581 is going to give you. So these folks don't have to, there's no difference for them to make a 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road. 90% of you are still going to get more now than you would with 581. At that point, maybe these folks have to make up a little bit, but not much if 581 is not up to that. It's, for Gilmore County, it's completely no benefit for us for the next 10 years, and very marginal benefit for very few people over there today.
Are there industries and businesses in Gilmore County that currently have an exemption besides senior citizens of any kind?
Well, there is, over 62 exemption is marginal. I think there's just as flat $2,000 that all homeowners get. That's, that's marginal. So there are other exemptions, they're tiny exemptions, you know? If my home is valued at $500,000 and I get a $2,000 school board exemption, yeah, it's not going to do a lot. So yes, there are other exemptions. What I'm going to say is there are no other meaningful exemptions.
Right, but what I'm saying is you can potentially, if those exemptions exist today, they could be adjusted to, and increased to maybe offset some of that. There are plenty of things that you could discuss as possible ways to make the digest meet where we need to come to to meet the budget.
They are, but let me, let me interrupt you here. There are ways, but there are not ways that we can do it this way. For instance, as soon as the $2,000 exemption is a school board exemption, we have floating exemption and $2,000 school board exemption. If, what you're suggesting, and I believe, is we can change that, you can raise that, but we can't. A school board can. You can go to their meeting and suggest they have it. We can't. What we have to talk about in here is the county's portion of the school board. We have zero control over what the school board does. They set their own millage rate, they set their own exemptions. So yeah, there are things that can be discussed, but they're not things that can be discussed in a general government meeting that have to be discussed in the school board.
And I just have one last thing. What, that's read from Diane when we talk about, you know, this backdoor money. I mean, it's, it's just an ugly way to say, you know, something, but, you know, whatever, words don't really matter to me, words are just words, but.
I just want to get your concept.
Yeah, I know, they, you know, to some people, it seems offensive to me. It's just like, oh, it's just, that's, you know. But I think what she's getting at is, and if you look at the tax digest over the last several years, we can all see that the, every year, the county has seen revenue increases year over year, even though millage rates have been rolled back, with the exception of 2023 when they stayed the same. Okay? Why that year, y'all didn't roll back, I don't know. Maybe y'all had some plans for Parks and Rec, that was a part of Big Parks and Rec time. I don't know. Either way, you all didn't have to go through the whole rigmarole, as you said. Well, that year you did, but when you roll back millage, you don't have to.
No, when we roll back millage rate to what the rollback rate is, then we're not getting any more from, from the people who were there before. We're still getting some more from new construction.
Right.
We're not getting any more from the other folks, or if we do, it's a very marginal amount than what we did last year because that's what this requires. So what we're, there's two distinctions. There's people who have lived here for a number of years versus people who have just either bought new here or built new here. Those people, you know, again, we're, maybe, maybe your tax bill is $3,000 from school board and county vote for that year. That's $3,000 we didn't get last year, or you weren't here last year. We're going to get that $3,000, multiply that by every how many people comes in, we're going to get more money. Now, ideally, when we get more money, then, okay, fine, we're getting more money from these folks so we could get less money from y'all. But nobody takes into account in all of this, and I'm going to go back to what I said before. If you think inflation is hurting y'all, see what it does to the county. See what happened to the price of gravel, asphalt, vehicles, labor.
Health insurance.
Health insurance. Health insurance was a million dollars more last year for '24. No, I'm sorry, it's $1 million more this year for '25 than it was last year for '24. A million dollars. Yeah, we get more money, but the expenses that we have, things that we really don't have a lot of control over are skyrocketing for us, just like they're skyrocketing for y'all. And I would make a statement that it affects us even more because if you want to buy a new F-250, and now it's $68,000, okay, you've just spent double what you could have spent a few years ago, but you only got to do it once, you know, and you're probably going to keep it for 15 years. We have to buy many F-250s. And what you do to one in 15 years, we're going to do to one in five years. Because it's going to go non-stop every day. to go nonstop every day, all day. That's why we buy them. So you buy one F-250 in 15 years, we buy, let's say, 10 every five years. Nobody takes into account that our expenses are going up just like y'all's are. If I could go back to what we could do with 2020 prices, man, I would be tickled dead to give y'all a really nice tax bill.
That was back when 1.29 was a lot.
Everything was one point too many. One point too many, and now it's become like 2.8. But if I could go back to 2020 prices for the county, yeah, we could give y'all a tremendous profit, but we can't do it. We have cut to the extent that we're probably going to be paving or repaving more roads, less roads, I'm sorry, in '25 than we have in previous years because we don't have the road budget that we had even in '24 for this. That was some of the cuts we had to make to get within the budget. So, you know, we're getting more revenue, but we're probably delivering in some areas less service because even though we're getting more revenue, it doesn't cover more expenditures that we're facing with the amount of inflation that we're seeing today and the things we have to do. So
Well, property values are tied to CPI, so if you're seeing inflation in your cost of goods, that's going to reflect in CPI.
Yeah.
And CPI has never been above 2%. Well, hasn't been since about 2004.
Let me tell you, CPI would be a benefit for us because, let's say 2%. Let's say we had a CPI of 2%, and that's, CPI is one of the things that 581 proposes.
Well, all the new development y'all are allowing in this county, that's not helping anything either, you know. It may be helping in the short term if we're not in the long term.
No, in my opinion, it's not helping in the short term. We don't have the infrastructure.
I've already been faced with that twice in my life, and, you know, it's a terrible thing.
Do you remember what I said about at some point, this infrastructure coming about is in the bud for this? You're right, and I acknowledge it. But
It'll definitely happen.
But it's a lot harder to say nobody can move into Gilmer County than you think.
Why can't they make it harder to all these people that do want to come in here and develop stuff and things and stuff like that?
We tried that a while back. We decided, how can we manage this with a group of people coming in? At the time, R1 required a minimum of 1 acre. So we thought, let's make it 581 that'll discourage some of this stuff. And so we put that forth as a proposal. People ain't noticed. And I understand your point. My kids just graduated from high school. You know, they've got a job where they can stay here, but you just said that they got to buy a minimum of 5 acres of land. They might can afford 1 acre, particularly if the prices were seeing then. My kids can't afford 5 acres of land. You're saying you're going to change this R1 from a minimum of 1 acre to a minimum of 5 acres. They can afford that. None of the folks who live here, none of our kids are going to be able to stay here in the houses. Good point, valid point. You know, we propose things sometimes and people push back on us, and we have to say, you're right. Now, we did, we did bump it to 1 and 1/2 acres, but we did away with 5 acres. What we did on that was we said, okay, we're going to, we're going to take another look at ag, and we moved ag to 1.5 acres. I called the DCA at that time, a part of the community affairs, and I asked them, how can we manage people coming in? How can we honestly discourage so many people coming in? And I told them that we tried to raise it to 5 acres, but that, here's the problem with it. What they said was, acreage is not going to help you on this. And he said, where do you have sewer lines running in the county? I'm very, mostly right down toward the cities. You know, we don't have a whole lot anywhere else around the county. They said, growth is going to follow sewer lines. If you want to limit growths in the county, don't run sewer lines. Now, I thought that was a smartest idea. It's got nothing to do with there running sewer lines, but it's like, we can, the expensive they are to run, so I didn't feel like they were running in the county. Two cents, so far, they have been true. What that does, though, is it leaves a corridor of stations where there's sewer lines that now, okay, this is where this is being tracked.
That kind of goes along with the natural road paving thing, too.
It does.
The wider the roads, the better the roads are, the more people.
Right. But here's the thing. What's happening now, and I'm going to be the one to say, I'm not the local. Now,
Yes, you are.
I've been here 21 years. If you're not born here.
And the rest of the world you are.
Well, maybe the rest of the world. But let me say this. What we're seeing the last several years, I'm going to say four or five years, is people, particularly since COVID, people who are coming here since COVID are people who are leaving big cities. You know, they've kind of seen the light. I mean, we, yeah, now we can work more remotely. We can go to some wonderful place like Gilmer County, and we've got better views, we've got better everything, and we've got good internet, and we can work.
And put up big floodlights and start our neighbors.
But here's what's happening. These people are moving in here, and now they're saying, I'm here, shut the door. I don't want anybody else coming in. Can't get that. You know, we just can't do that.
With all due respect, we didn't come here and build subdivisions. We can't
And I'm not going to, you
Yeah. Okay, I'm just saying, that's the difference. You can't.
And I didn't either, but I did buy into some of these. And so, you know, I'm not sure that's terribly different.
You didn't build one. You didn't come here and build 100 houses. That's the difference.
Back to the conversation that we came here to discuss.
Sometimes I do agree.
My name, John Alltire. So what we had on that amendment that I voted against, but it was just one paragraph. And this bill that created the, to create this amendment is 80 something pages long, and it's being amended. So they're changing it. They're moving the goalposts. First off, let me backtrack for a second. I wanted to thank you and compliment you for the amount of hours that you spent doing the research, going through these 80 something pages.
Thank you.
And also, thank you again for presenting this to us in layman's terms that we can understand it. So I will say I voted against the bill, and then I came to be for it, listening to the arguments. And now it's, it comes to the point to, I don't know, we sit here and we think we do the right thing. We try to elect the right people to represent us. And then they get in their cars and they drive down to Atlanta and they drink the water and something changes. But we're looking at a disjointed assembly right now that you got people throwing people to the ground and fighting and representatives that don't even get to speak in our house. That said, I just, I think, I think we're between a rock and a hard place. And as you alluded to earlier, do you trust these people in the Gold Dome, or do you trust the folks here? And again, between a rock and a hard place, I'll have to put my faith in you and your board. That's pretty much all I want to say. And again, thank you for all the hard work, John.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, don't mistake my questioning for me, you know, disagreeing with any of your stance. I just, I need, it's clarification
And I want to answer your questions.
That the citizens need. And I would really love to see, I think it would be beneficial if Ms. Gooch could put together, no relation to the senator, could put together something for the citizens to see. Okay, this is what it really means to you, opting in versus opting out, because at the end of the day, that's what we want to see. If it doesn't benefit us to the extent that you, that we, that the senator has, and not just Gooch, just others, has put forward to us, then we'd like to be able to see that that's not, that's what the truth is. And the only way she holds the key to that, and no pressure, though, but she knows, at the end of the day, she's the one who could tell you what this will mean for the citizens of Gilmer County, what it will mean to the county government and the digest, and whether, and where it all balances out at. And I'd like to hear more from her in the future because that's important, what's, the information she has is important.
I will beg your plea, and maybe we can get her to do that because she and I have had the same conversation that you're saying would like to stay on page for everybody. So that's been beneficial to me. I think it would be beneficial for y'all. So maybe we can convince her to do something like that. I mean, I need to say, too, I don't want to imply that I think Senator Gooch is trying to pull something over on us or anything like that. I'm convinced that there are counties in this state that will benefit greatly from H3581. The fact of the matter is, there's 159 counties in this state. There's 159 different situations in this state, and the legislators are trying to come up with just one size fits all. It just doesn't happen to fit Gilmer County. But I have no doubt, and the senator's remarks have to be taken in the context of statewide. I take them personally because that's just the way I am. But to be fair, these comments statewide. And there are counties that H3581 would be beneficial to me. We just don't happen to be it. Now, I don't think any county, I don't like the idea of opt-out or you're in forever in any way. I don't think any county should be happy about that. But the provisions within 581 would be very beneficial for some of the counties in this state. I have no doubt about it. We just aren't yet. So I don't mean to say that, you know, I have to look at what he's saying in the context of statewide, even though I take it personally. I understand he's talking statewide.
Mr. Chairman?
Why does the State of Newington Sheriff of Gilmer County, why did the Board of Commissioners put into effect, first of all, the 65 and older, for example, school tax?
My guess is it's probably the same situation that the legislators had when they did this. They were just hearing a lot of complaints from people about taxes.
No, 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 you're not, I understand my question. Why did the Board of Commissioners put that into place?
They didn't.
They didn't. Oh, who did?
Speaker Ralston. It was unbeknownst to
By itself?
Yeah, it was unbeknownst to the Board of Education.
No, 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 no. Did he, did he just write it down and then, did he go through the legislature?
It was introduced as a local bill, and then submitted as a referendum, but
I know the answer to that. I'm making a point. I have that, but 911 under my purview, I have addressing, we assign addresses to everyone that moves in this county. You know what the number one reason, the largest group of people that are moving to this county, which is retirement age individuals, you know what the number one reason that they actually verbalize?
Oh, absolutely.
They've been moving here because they don't have to pay school taxes. What does that do to the, those that are not 65? You stated earlier, it increased their, okay. My point is this, and I'll clarify and go on record, just as you did, and I truly mean this, from the bottom of my heart, I consider him a friend, and I'll put signs up for him.
Same here, brother.
I will put signs up for him when he runs for reelection or if he runs for a new office next year. Senator Steve Gooch, he's a friend of mine, and I have a lot of confidence and trust in him. So do I, Representative Johnny Chastain. But one size does not fit all in the state of Georgia. You know what the sheriffs in Georgia, in North Georgia, when we're trying to get stuff passed in the legislature, you know what, you know, the number one excuse that we hear? Well, that would kill South Georgia. Okay, well, there's about three Georgias. There's North Georgia, South Georgia, and Metro Georgia. One size does not fit all. And I will say this, I almost explode. I told Chairman Paris this yesterday. I almost explode. And I'm only speaking from a standpoint of just, I've got to get this off my chest in a public meeting. I explode when I read on social media and comments about crooked and, you know, taxation and stuff. Well, nobody likes taxes. I figured it out yesterday, the amount of taxes, not sales tax, but every other tax that I'm taxed. And I was taxed $40,000 last year, and I don't like that, no more than anybody else does. But the government has to run. So I like Senator Gooch, think the world of him, and I trust him emphatically. So do I, Representative Johnny Chastain. Both of them, when they have law enforcement sensitive bills that they're voting on, they call every sheriff that they are representing to ask our opinion before they vote on it. And I appreciate that. But I will say this, in 2018 and 19, I was president of the Georgia Sheriff's Association, which meant absolutely nothing except I had to go to the Capitol a bunch and deal with trying to get legislation passed or fight legislation that was trying to be passed. And the sheriffs that year, the big topic was hemp and marijuana, growing marijuana in the state and for medical purposes, and it's only for medical. And we fought it, and we had it beat. And we lost, we lost it in the late hours of the last day of session with a phone call. I have never lost an important issue with the Board of Commissioners, and I've worked with about five different boards since I've been with the sheriff's office. I've never lost an important issue with the Board of Commissioners with a late night phone call. So that was not a Senator Gooch issue. I think the world of him. Johnny Chastain was not represented during that time. Didn't have anything to do with our representatives. But that's how things work in the state. And it really rubs me the wrong way to hear that we don't have, that we think these three in humor before you came in about three weeks ago are crooks. That really rubs me the wrong way because I don't think y'all are crooks. And I don't have to be here, and I'm not expecting any kind of favoritism the next time I ask you for money. But I'm telling you, this is how I feel, and I'm saying it in a public meeting because I want Gilmer County to know, I have confidence in the decisions that y'all make. We lost the medical marijuana, you know, the hemp, and then, because we saw it as an expansion of marijuana into the state of Georgia. And we were told, absolutely not. That's not the case. That's not going to happen. What has happened, you think about it. If you go outside of Gilmer County, matter of fact, you can be in Gilmer County, but just go to Metro Atlanta and sit in traffic, just sit in traffic, because you know there's traffic in Metro Atlanta. You can sit there for a while. What do you smell? Go on vacation. Go to a hotel. Go to a restaurant. Go to anything. What do you smell? Marijuana. It happens, just like we and law enforcement told them it would do. I'm not saying that the folks down there are crooks. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that one size does not fit all, number one. And number two, they don't always have, they don't always know what's right. They may think they do. But I'm going to put my trust in my local folks to make the decisions of how they spend my tax money. Thank you for enduring that.
I'll say a word about Senator Gooch because I was concerned with hearing all of his comments. Actually, I don't ever watch the show referred to.
Well, I watched that one.
You hosted it.
But I had the chance walking into the chamber luncheon and causing us both to be late because he stopped and he talked to me. And he said, why aren't you guys? And I said, tell me why we should when our chief appraiser says this is the best thing for our citizens. Give me a reason why we should go against what she says. Who knows the digest better than anyone why we should go against? And he said, he looked at me, he goes, it may be that you're one of the counties that it's not better for. And I said, that's it. You know, we know our county better. You know our You know, we know our county better, you know our digest best, we know what our citizens want, we know if we're already providing the best, why would we go to a, a one-size-fits-all when we know what's best for our community and our citizens? And that's what we're trying to do. So, that's, kudos to Senator Gooch, he did tell me, well, you guys may be one, and that was, I believe, after breath for that interview.
So, I will say with some authority as a bad person, that one size does in fact not fit all.
And I will say for clarification, too, and shortly after I had this conversation, you know, I won't sit here and say that 581 could not benefit somebody. There could be somebody that could be benefited, in addition to what the county has, not alone, but in addition to. So, I mean, there, there always could be somebody, you know, but for the majority of the people, for the majority of the 8,000 home steps we currently have, what the county has in place works better than what 581's gonna offer.
And as I said before, in a new commissioners conference, there were several new commissioners, and they were shocked that we would opt out, because they did not have home step exemption in place in their communities. So, there are a lot that is gonna help.
There is a lot that, and why did you...
I'm sure that those that put this bill together were looking out the major, for the majority of the people, and luckily, they gave us an opt-out for those that are...
Which is what they're there for. Yeah, pretty much already figured.
The only thing that I don't wanna add is that I keep, I read some of the comments in various places, and they talk about we need to cut spending, well, they're talking about cutting spending with a very broad brush, but when we get into this room and in other rooms where we need every year to work over budget, we have to, we have to use a big fund, or we don't get to use this big broad brush. If Stacy needs eight more vehicles, well, you know, we need to find the money for that, because as Stacy alluded, he trusts us, we trust Stacy. I do trust Stacy, I think I speak for my fellow commissioners when I say that, because the needs are real, and I could, you allent me of, of needs this county has right now, and that we need to fund, and we just can't, because we, our, our resources are finite. And I still want to see us move away from the only source of revenue for so many of our facilities from the property owners, and move it away, and move it toward a sales tax for different things.
How unfair tax can be, I wish we could do it nationwide, but I don't think that would ever happen. There, the floss is, is like one step toward that, toward what you're talking about. If we had the floss, and we could use that as an offset to property tax, which is what it would be intended for. You know, I think that would be a good thing, but what I don't understand is, if it's a good thing within 581, why wouldn't it be a good thing outside 581? Why are we not allowed to have a referendum on that without opting into 581? That, to me, it's more like, you know, the carrot and stick than it is trying to find an actual solution to be brought.
This would be an unpopular statement, and it is, but it's, them's the facts. If the floss were to be passed, it would be revenue neutral for our county. It would not raise us one more penny. We couldn't buy one more round of ammunition for Stacy than we could before.
But it would shift a certain amount of the cost from the property owners to the tourists and visitors. And all of it, because the property owners would still buy things and pay SL tax, but a good portion of it, and I think a general consensus on this is, in tourist counties like ours, a good bit over half.
And I concur with it, I concur with that, but the floss would not give us one more penny.
Oh, no, no. That, and...
We'd have no more revenue to buy truck tires or...
It would not. But it would move us closer to what you're talking about, where we're funding everything in the way it's over the property tax. All right, does anybody have anything else? And folks, we appreciate it. Chair?